Good evening and welcome. It is Thursday, the fourth day of February 2016. It's just after seven o'clock. This is the Newmarket School Board. Called the meeting to order. We just took an extra couple of minutes delaying the start to visit with the folks from Link Together and Service Learning, and we'll tell you more about that in two weeks. I'd ask everyone to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ask Julia to lead us.
(inaudible) [inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
I am... Are you going to help me with this first thing? Please, thank you. I am not prepared, clearly. I'd ask Mr. Mazzoni to join us and help us with a very important recognition tonight.
Which one? This one?
Yes, please.
Thank you all very much. I have the pleasure of introducing this fine young student of ours, Ms. Kira Franklin, who is not only a student at Newmarket High School, an 11th grader, but she's also an SST student, which is Seacoast School of Technology. In that course, or those two courses that she's enrolled in there are Intro to Computer Graphics last semester, and now she's going to 3D Animation this semester. And those are pretty great accomplishments, but what I'm here to talk about tonight is Kira has just received recognition in the 2016 Scholastic Art Awards in New Hampshire, which is a pretty prestigious award that is put on through the New Hampshire Association of Art Educators. And I made a copy of her picture, which doesn't do justice of her illustration. I shouldn't even call it a picture. I'm going to let her answer your questions. But her title is Portrait Illustration in the Category of Digital Art, and she has won the Gold Key Award. We're really proud of her. An award ceremony and reception will take place on Sunday, February 7th, at the Stockbridge Theater in Pinkerton Academy. Now, if you want to ask further questions, I think Kira's going to do this a lot more justice than I, and that is a reproduction done by me, which does not do the picture justice, so...
Come on up. Talk to us.
With my portrait illustration, I actually included a poem with it. I submitted it to Counter-Clockwise, our school's literary arts magazine, and the title that I gave it in the submission to the magazine was "I Really Don't Want to Be Here." I think that's pretty clearly conveyed in my facial expression here. I wasn't feeling quite well that day, and I was just kind of wanting to get it over with, and that's what happened when I took the picture. And this portrait actually took about two and a half to three weeks to complete with hour and a half classes each morning every weekday. And I honestly thought that I could have lightened the tones a little bit, but I really liked how it came out in the end.
Would it put you on the spot if I asked you if in your hand is that poem?
I do not have it.
It's not? Oh, that would have rocked it, I'm sure.
So, explain to people who don't understand the how you did... Like, it's all computer graphics?
Yeah.
So, kind of give them a rundown. Was it done at our school, or was it done at SST?
It was done at SST, and it was done on a program Adobe Illustrator, and that uses vector graphics. So, instead of little individual pixels, it uses mathematical calculations to give clear, crisp lines that don't blur when the portrait, or when any image created in it is resized. So, you can make logos in it, you can, like, make brochures, you can do anything, and it's really helpful for making things for businesses, I think. And I've recently used it to help create different elements for a final project that we did in SST. We had to design and, like, create a bakery, a gluten-free bakery. And my... It was a team effort. My team and I ended up coming up with the name Gluten Free 603. So, we made a logo and a newspaper ad and a magazine coupon and a brochure, all describing this imaginary bakery. And I just... The program is really amazing, and I would definitely use it again to make more of these, despite how much work goes into it.
Maybe we could get her to write a newsletter. And get some information out.
So, is this a step above high definition? In terms of clarity?
Well, do you mean, like, the clarity of the image itself?
Right.
I guess so. Like, a lot of the images that we see on screens here, like this one up on the screen, that is... That's a JPG image, which means it's all pixelated. But having the actual Illustrator file, that image has no pixelation at all, and you can do whatever you want with it without it being distorted at all.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay. That's great.
This is awesome.
Any other questions? All right, then. What I would do is invite us to take a couple of minutes and recess, give us a chance to come down and congratulate Kira, but for right now, why don't we, while the temperature is spinning on the microwave here, say thank you for coming and sharing, and congratulations. Let's take a minute and just visit.
Let me give this one here?
Yeah, I absolutely love it. I actually have to drop it next year, though. It'll be my senior year, and I still have requiring courses that I have to take, and I can't fit SST into my schedule.
Really?
Yeah. But...
Congratulations.
I also wanted to point out, too, she told me, and that she is the first Gold Key winner at SST as ever had. They've had honorable mentions, and they've had...
I wondered about that.
She's... They've never had a Gold Key.
When my teacher was for the... Asked me to... And I honestly thought it was a literary arts magazine, like, Counter-Clockwise at the school. I was like... So, when she announced that I had won an award for it, I was like, "What?" She's texting me on the bus on the way back. "Oh, my God, I put it away!"
It's a way more CGI, like, when you look at her. Up there, it looked more photograph, but that looks more...
Is it programming that this does this? Or... Because you said mathematical...
It's exactly like drawing, like, if you were... If you were to draw with a pencil and paper, it's just like drawing.
Right. I have just coding things. No. That's crazy!
No.
I have no understanding. I'm a little... She does it on a program at home, too, that's all pixelated, and I watch her do it and go, "How do you know what you're doing?" Just do.
You didn't... You didn't take her?
No. I don't have an artistic bone in my body.
Does the program know where the light is and where the shadows?
I had to draw the...
Really?
Yeah.
Hey, congratulations. Thank you for coming and sharing.
Yeah, it's important that we get to see all the good stuff.
We need to see more of this stuff.
She got the letter, and she... I'm like, "Do you want to go?" She's like, "Yeah!" Always take a hurry. And then get letters. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
I think Mr. Mazzoni...
You can keep it if you want.
I have to... And we'll get the original.
Chris, can we take...
We'll have one from Pinkerton, too.
Maybe we can put it upstairs?
Absolutely.
It's a whole new world, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Or do you want to keep it? More show in the office?
I would.
All right, thank you.
So, we're back. Has Chris got us back?
Yes.
He does. Outstanding. Well, that was just one more of those recognitions of learning and the celebrations of accomplishment that I think is important for us to do more of. At this point, I would open the floor to public comment tonight.
Hi. Tony Weinstein, Ash Swamp Road. I have some information I wanted to pass out to you guys. I don't think that I have enough copies for everybody, so I apologize. Maybe I do have enough.
You do have enough, yeah.
Look at that. Um, sure.
Oh, God.
So, I, um... I know. I wanted to... I wanted to get this information to as many people as possible, and I figured, you know, it's televised, and it's important information for the community to have. So, what I passed out were statistics about heroin use in Newmarket. And you may or may not be aware, but there's a crisis in New Hampshire, and Newmarket is certainly not immune, and hasn't been immune, to the crisis that's happening statewide. There's a group in Newmarket, and it's called the Newmarket Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention, that has been meeting regularly since the summer. It has support from all aspects of the community, including the school, and, you know, school, businesses, fire department, police department, town officials, state rep. I mean, it's really our faith, our faith community. So, it's been... It's really a broad group of people. And our goal has really been about education, educating the community that there's a problem. I think that when it comes to you guys, you know, we typically... Kids aren't shooting up heroin in the bathrooms. You know, it's been pretty clear that it's not... There isn't a heroin epidemic in our schools, but heroin affects everyone in a community. And so, we've had three deaths, two confirmed, one is pending toxicology, but it's assumed that it was another death of heroin. So, that in 2015, three deaths. One of those was a parent... Actually, two of those were parents of kids. I know that I reached out, or someone reached out to me about their son who was struggling with opiates. And those are, you know, prescription painkillers that you get when you get your wisdom tooth pulled or you have knee surgery, and it's so easy. I mean, that's one of the... One of the factors for this epidemic in New Hampshire is the over-prescription of opioids. And so, it affects our kids. And I just wanted to make you guys aware of it, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Could you just summarize what's on this for folks at home?
Sure, I don't have another one.
Oh! It's pretty telling.
Yeah. It is. It is. I think that it's... I've been involved now for... Since August, and, you know, it's shortly after it began, and every... I see the numbers, and I'm like, "Oh!" You know, or Lieutenant Kyle True and then Rick Bodat are all... Both attend our meetings, and every week, you know, we hear another story about an overdose or, you know, somebody else who needs help. So, it's staggering, I think. So, the police department in Newmarket received 56 heroin-related calls in 2015. It's a lot for a small town. The PD responded to 29 overdoses, and two of those were confirmed because of heroin opiate. One is pending toxicology. And there were eight calls to the PD for needles found in and around town. So, again, you know, kids could stumble upon a needle on the sidewalk, so that's why I wanted to bring it to you guys.
Glad you did.
And I don't know if you're aware, too, and Chris, you might be aware of this, but there's legislation pending for, you know, they've talked about making it mandatory to provide drug education. I mean, I know that we do. I don't... And there's... That one got tabled a little bit, because they have a lot more work to do before they start mandating what individual school districts are required to do, but it will probably come down the line at some point. Thanks, Mark.
We're really lucky in Newmarket. Not every community has an organization that's working so hard to educate and keep this on the forefront.
It's true.
NewmarketASAP.org. Say again, it's Newmarket?
Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention. Yep.
NewmarketASAP.org.
We were recently just interviewed by MSNBC. It's supposed to air in the next couple of days. We'll see. In anticipation of the, you know, presidential...
Perfect.
...hoopla.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Anyone else with public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to our student report and review the calendar. Can I just ask a quick question first? When somebody comes in with something like that, is it possible, from a technology standpoint, to show it to the folks at home as well? I think we need to get there. So, one of the things that we've kind of talked about, what we need right now, I think it's worth telling you, what Mr. Mazzoni said, you know, a minute and a half ago when we broke, was that the picture that you saw on the screen, he used his iPhone to take a picture of it, email it to himself, so that he could pull it up from his email on that computer and splash it to the screen. And it was on at home. And we were able to get it on at home. The alternative to that, it's happening. I couldn't have done that necessarily, because I couldn't get logged on to that machine. I don't have a password, blah, blah, blah. If we had a document camera, which is not an enormous expense, and we could look at an Elmo, that was a brand name, was Elmo, but, you know, a little... It hooks into the USB port, and it takes a picture, or a video, you know, a streaming picture of whatever it sees, and feeds it right to the computer, and you could see it. So, I think we could look into that, because it doesn't have to be hugely expensive. And then you could take a picture for technological, you know, perspective and feed it to the screen, so that Chris can pick it up on the cable feed. You could take a picture of anything in the room, you know, any flat surface. So, we should look at that. A picture is worth a thousand words, and... And this is really well done. This is really nice and simple and direct, and it really splashes. You saw my reaction when I first saw it, so...
It's tough.
Thank you. Julia, tell us... Tell us any... You know, whatever it is you'd like to tell us, but, you know...
So, the sixth through eighth graders just completed NIWA testing this past week, and there will be a pizza bowl held by the senior class on the 17th, next Wednesday, or a few Wednesdays, at 6:00 PM, and it's held in the cafeteria. Sports-wise, boys' basketball is 7-5, and their next game is Friday against Epping at Exeter. And the girls' record is 5-8, and their next game is also Friday against Epping at Exeter High School. Ice hockey is 7-3, and their next game is home against Somersworth and Cobrown. And indoor tracks next meet is this Sunday, and it will be the state championship at Dartmouth. And last, the Poetry Out Loud competition for the school will be next Friday, 6:30 PM, in the band room.
Our calendar says Thursday. Is that possible? The 11th?
Possibly. I can hope.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that we... Everything else confirmed? 6:30 PM?
And I'll say, if you've never been to Poetry Out Loud, you should go. It's very interesting, and it's amazing that kids get up on the stage and recite a poem through memory, and they have to be demonstrative, and it's fun. Good night out.
So, Mr. Mazzoni's got his... He's got his notes, too, and he's confirming. It looks like it's the 11th.
Yeah.
Yeah, unless they change it. So, that's a... That'll be Thursday night, the 11th, 6:30 PM. And where'd you say you thought it was?
It's in the band room.
The band room?
Yeah.
Excellent. Band room, perfect.
It'll be on the stage.
If we keep going from that, on the 18th is our next school board meeting. Then we have school vacation the week of the 22nd through the 26th of February, coming back on Leap Day. First day back will be 29th February, the Monday. Remind everybody that presidential... The presidential primary voting is this Tuesday, the 9th. That will... Polls will be open from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 at night, and that is no longer at the gymnasium of the junior/senior high. It will be in the bays of the fire station on New Road. I heard a presentation from Town Administrator Fornier the other night suggesting that the weather forecast was tempting some weather event that day. So, parking is going to be a little dicey there, because there's no lines, no... You know, it's not going to be clear, but they're going to have staff out there directing folks. So, Tuesday, the 9th, you'll do presidential primary voting at the fire building. We call that the... DPW. DPW, the Safety... Yeah, over on New Road. School district meeting voting is Tuesday, March 8th. Don't miss that. Polls again open from 7:00 to 7:00. They'll be doing that here at Town Hall in the basement, in the auditorium, like so many times before. Anything else that ought to be before us for the calendar? Excellent. Then I would dial back to Mr. Mazzoni and ask him to talk to us about a new proposal concerning world languages. Thank you for emailing that along earlier.
First of all, thank you for making time. You'll see the... It's in as a proposal, and I think at the end of this, we'd like you to, you know, consider it, take action, what you feel like you need to do. But we've got a world language proposal before you, which is gradual stepping down in the offerings of French as a language and in increasing our offerings, or introducing, then increasing our offerings of Mandarin Chinese over about a three-year span. So, I'll get into that a little bit, sort of how we got there, and why we think it's the right thing for kids. So, a gradual plan, like I said, to phase in and phase out in a perfect world would be the way to go. The first piece in looking at the factors, some of the future trends that we're looking at in global business, global economy, and all those other pieces, you know, support this being a really good idea and a really good opportunity. We conducted a student survey earlier in the year in which we asked students for world language or other language preferences. We corresponded with seven accredited high schools in New Hampshire and Maine, and there's been a decline in enrollment in numbers for our French offerings over the last few years. So, there's four pretty good factors there that made us think. So, to this point, you'll see up here, once we compared those programs of studies for those seven schools, which is what we're asking, we'd need permission to look at that. Their offerings vary. You know, some offer German, Latin, Chinese, Arabic, Japanese, and some of the area schools, but it was pretty mixed across the board. You couldn't find one that seemed to be everywhere, other than Spanish, and I think Latin was the one I saw most often. And our predictions, based on some of those pieces, is that Mandarin Chinese would be a growing option. So, again, looking at Chinese and French as future trends is kind of where we're looking. Again, those enrollments have been in decline, and for those who don't know, most colleges and universities like to see two years of a world language. Many are now liking to see three. So, we'll get... That's important as we talk about phasing in and phasing out. We did, as I said earlier, conduct a survey of high school students. Julia, you remember... May remember that, or you may just nod your head and pretend you remember.
I remember.
But I think you do. So, we did want to make sure we gauge student interest in that as well, because that's another way to sort of take a look at what our enrollment might be. So, the proposal would sort of look like this, and again, it'd be a three-year process. For the first year, we'd look at offering Mandarin Chinese at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level, as well as an introductory, what you'd call Mandarin 1 or Mandarin Chinese 1, at the high school level. At the same time, we would offer French 2 and French 3 to allow students who are already enrolled in Frenches 1 and 2 to continue to attain that second, third year, which colleges and universities like to see, and, again, completing those second and third years. So, there was sort of a thoughtful approach to it. Again, the second year, we would still continue to offer those at the middle level plus 1, and then again, offering Mandarin Chinese 2, stepping out to just French 3 in the second year, and then in the last year, again, step down. So, it would be introductory level Mandarin Chinese 2 and 3 over time, and that would be the year... That would be the year we... First year, we would not have French offered historically. Again, there was a few additional factors in looking at that, the hiring process, thinking about that as we're headed down the road, what looks like, you know, what it looks like in terms of programming. Of course, coming to you and proposing a program of studies change is a consideration. And with input from both the Director of Curriculum, Ms. Ballantyne, as well as the Director of Guidance, Mr. Pavlidis, we've sort of hashed this out in a way we think it's going to be really good for kids and our future down the road. So, I know that was sort of really abbreviated for a three-year approach, but I anticipate there'll be some questions, so...
So, you're...
What would you like to know?
So, you're down this path a bit. I mean, you want to take some questions, or this isn't just an intro thought. You guys have done some of the homework, so you're ready to...
That would be the hope, and of course, if you needed more time. Again, our course selection is kind of... We're on a timeline for that, but obviously, we'd like to, if we could, have an answer by the 18th, but if we're prepared to answer questions now, I'm prepared to do some of that.
How easy is it to find a teacher that teaches Mandarin?
I knew that was going to be the first question.
Biggest question.
That, in talking to the schools that do offer it, isn't as much of a barrier. In fact, it looked pretty promising. Again, like any hiring process, you put out... You go through the application process, you vet out your best candidates, and you go from there. But I did not get the sense from anyone that I spoke to that that part would be an issue. And again, Mandarin being the... Now the number one spoken language in the world, the thought would be, it might be easier.
Was Portsmouth among your seven?
It was.
Okay. The University of New Hampshire has a program?
Yep.
Of studies, you know, for Mandarin? So, there's the potential... There's the potential for a steady stream of educators, so, you know, of folks to come out?
They also offer a summer program in Chinese. My daughter's Chinese.
Oh, excellent.
And it's for seventh through twelfth graders, so it might be a good way to see if you have interest, if you have some...
To seed it.
And it's free, because it's funded by the federal government.
Excellent.
For language learning. I attended last year as a...
UNH. UNH. Thank you.
It's a summer program?
And I know there's a milieu of options...
Oh, yeah.
Such as that. Obviously, I'm not prepared to go that into depth, and again, I wanted to make sure that we're putting the cart before the horse, before we chase those pieces down.
You worked on a French word there, too. It's good.
A milieu? My French is better than my Chinese.
I just wanted to say that a lot. I mean, I know that the... I mean, UNH, if our very local state university wasn't teaching that, you know, that might be a chink against, but the reality is, we ought to be seeing some student population coming out, or some graduate population. I would comment that I think it's great that we're covering our existing French students, those that are already taking it. That's important not to leave that behind.
So, how would you... How would you get a teacher to... For that, for the next three years? Would it be a part-time position?
That's a great question. No, it would... What we propose is to keep it a full-time position with the hope, again, that we would find someone who was able to teach the two sections of French and the other four sections of Chinese. Also, having a plan, knowing that that...
He's rolling some dice now.
Skill set. That skill set is, you know, it's out there. We have sort of bounced some other plans around, which, you know, I'm hesitant to sort of...
Yeah, you don't have to say it aloud, but it's okay.
Go through all those roads, you know, because they're just in the idea stage. But we've thought through all of those possibilities, and knowing full well that finding someone who was dual-certified in French and Chinese, we'd be really lucky to do that.
I'm continually surprised with education, because I know so little about it, and I didn't even know this concept of teaching Mandarin was coming on board anywhere, never mind Newmarket. If you look at schools across the country, is this a common trend? Not just in New Hampshire, but I think of places, international cities like... Well, Boston would be one, but New York and so forth. Is the public school systems generally persuaded by this trend?
And the research that I conducted as part of this, and just in terms of just reading
I would comment that I think it's great that we're covering our existing French students, those that are already taking it, that's important not to leave that behind.
So how would you, how would you get a teacher to, for that, for the next three years, would it be a part-time position?
That's a great question. No, it would, what we propose is to keep it a full-time position with the hope, again, that we would find someone who was able to teach the two sections of French, and the other four sections of Chinese. Also having a plan, knowing that that-
He's rolling some dice now.
Skill set, that skill set is, you know, it's out there. We have sort of bounced some other plans around, which, you know, I'm hesitant to sort of-
Yeah, you don't have to say it aloud, but it's okay.
Go through all those roads, you know, because they're just in the idea stage. But we've, we've thought through all of those possibilities, and knowing full well that finding someone who was dual-certified in French and Chinese, we'd be really lucky to do that.
I'm continually surprised with education, because I know so little about it, and I, I didn't even know this concept of teaching Mandarin was, was coming on board anywhere, never mind Newmarket. If you look at schools across the country, is this a common trend? Not, not just in New Hampshire, but I, I think of places, international cities like, well, Boston would be one, but New York and so forth, is the public school systems generally persuaded by this, by this trend?
And the research that I, I conducted as part of this, and just in terms of just reading and staying current with what we're to do, yes, the answer is yes. But it's, it's amazing to me how regionalized it is. For instance, Washington DC was the example that came to me, because I had Arabic in the back of my head at first, and then when I sort of dug into that more, it was more people who were committed to jobs in and around the capital, who might be into intelligence or, you know, that specific part of the world. But that was interesting to me, that individual districts sort of might have concentrated more in specifics, or if there was a specific demographic in their area. But yes, the, the big answer is yes, this one, Chinese, seems to work better for us in the seacoast, and for how we're trying to prepare our kids for the world.
And would that, would that, if you were to look at trends within universities of leaving programs behind and adopting new ones, would you find universities with the same trend, that they're tending to leave French behind and pick up Mandarin?
I would not be the one to speak with authority on that. I, I couldn't say for sure.
As an outsider, just contemplating, those are the kinds of things, the questions that I'd, I'd like to get my arms around, to make sure that, you know, this is really, it's a big change.
It's, it's a cultural shift in, in many ways.
Learning a non-Latin-based language is a whole different challenge to our students, to, to everything.
It certainly is. And I know one of the pieces that was hard to come to grips with, from a personal level, is that sort of, it's an institutional change, you know, French has been an institution, especially in New Hampshire, for hundreds of years, so, you know, yep, I, I absolutely would agree that that's probably in a lot of people's minds.
As a person who went to a high school near Washington DC that did not have Arabic, and it was in the eighties, but we won't go back that far, we had Japanese and Chinese at that point at the public high school that I attended. And I think that with the shift of the world that you're talking about, I know someone who's a junior at a public school in Maine, actually, and she is taking French and Chinese at this point, to make herself as marketable as possible for the global world. So I think that, you know, just like we had the young woman from SST, giving us a glimpse into the future of art that I didn't even know existed, I think this Chinese piece and this language will, will add another factor to the, to the resumes of our students, potentially.
Do we think, I mean, I have a sense, I don't know which of your seven, but I have a sense that Chinese has been introduced at the high schools in this region, and that's not new. I mean, we were talking about that at Exeter when I was there, half a dozen years ago, even before that, ten years ago, we were, we were doing Chinese. So, so this isn't a, it's not a new move in the seacoast necessarily around us, but I've always, like, I wonder about French. I grew up with French in the high school, but I also grew up in the valley, in Maine. I mean, it's, you know, we're up against French, the Quebecois, you know, the French influence, up and down the, you know, whether you're in Arustha County, or you're, so, and I know that there's strong French influences through regions of New Hampshire as well, but I had never had a sense that French was really a dominant language being taught, like, for you to say-
Decades ago?
If I look at, if I look at other parts of the country, you know, if there wasn't a strong cultural influence that drove us to, to learn French because of that, were they doing that up and down the Mississippi? Were they doing that in the, you know, the, in the flatlands of, you know? And, or is this just something that we've held on to because of the, the regional heritage? Because certainly, it can't be a strong language that plays out in terms of international commerce, or some of those others.
Used to be.
Used to be? Okay, so that's, my question, I guess, is Latin. Because, because Latin was the starwork when I was coming up through, we all took that, you know, and we took, I took it, I was, I was mad that I couldn't take it in middle school, because we didn't have it. We took it all the way through high school, took it in college. And it was really important, it was really useful, for instance, in, in the PSATs and the SATs, and talking about, you know, analogies, and your vocabulary skills shoot up, because you have a sense of the roots. You didn't speak the language, you didn't write the language, but fundamentally, you learned something that really, I think, propelled. Any conversation about how that fits in our world today?
I think in addition to the places you mentioned, I, I think I would argue that both law and medicine would be areas in which Latin would be important. It didn't, in the, in the work that we did, it did not place high either in student response, or in any enrollment predictions that we did, but it is still one of those institutional languages that, at the larger schools, does exist. And again, I think this is one of those places where size does come into effect with what we're trying to do, because we have to predict what we're going to have for enrollments other than just a lot of offerings, because we could have, you know, a wide menu and only have two, or three, or four people, because our classes can be that small.
Some of those really big schools struggle to find staff.
And that's the other piece.
I know they did with Latin. Latin was hard, it's, used to be, you could, but today it's harder, so.
And yet, as you, and I work in the international labor market with Portuguese, and Brazilian, Honduran, and so, Ecuadorian, and so forth, and the background in Latin helps you understand their language considerably, because they're, again, based, but I'm not sure that's even-
It's interesting.
Certainly in the sciences.
What, the, the other question that I had about Chinese is, are we thinking about the written language?
I, I wouldn't say we've gotten that far down that road yet.
Because that-
Vocabulary.
Is-
I think, in, in the high schools, like this young woman in Maine, it's a two-pronged approach. It's speak, three, speaking, writing, comprehension of the words. So obviously, it's a whole character-driven, a whole different animal.
Very different.
You know, but-
I think the wise thing, because of those pieces, I think with Chinese particularly, is beginning at sixth, seventh, and eighth, and stepping it in, rather than starting with, you know, we're not introducing Chinese two or three, or, I, I think that's a consideration. And the thought would be, you're starting sort of at the beginning level, and working it in, rather than, you know, introducing it halfway down the road.
I am so glad you guys are thinking about stuff like this.
Yeah.
That's where your heads, that's where your heads need to be.
We thought it'd be nice to talk about something besides the building, or-
Yeah. Talking about education. Questions?
Chris, you said, you did a student survey?
Yes.
What, what kind of questions were on that? Was it a survey of asking how many might participate or be interested in it?
At the high school level, it was pretty, pretty broad. At the high school level, we offered, I think, five choices to just high school students, because that would sort of drive the decision. And Mandarin was, was one of the top, the other options, and I based, we based the options from the seven area schools that we studied, just to see what would be out there. Obviously, we took a few out that we knew, you know, German wasn't something that we were prepared to offer, so that wasn't on the survey. But Latin was. The other one that, that had a strong showing was American Sign Language, which is a sort of a different conversation, because it, it wouldn't really satisfy requirements for the second, for the language requirement at colleges and universities. We weren't really sure how that would fit, and we didn't think that was the best thing for our kids.
Did they, it was, I don't know what type of survey it was, but did they give feedback on why they chose?
We didn't. It was really broad-based. If we offered these, this number of things, how many of you would be interested? Through advisories, it was a blind survey. Not super scientific, but effective.
I, and I should know the answer to this one, but in terms of Spanish, does that, that now, is that available?
We, yes, we currently offer Spanish. In fact, that's our highest enrollment. We've got two full-time Spanish teachers and one full-time French teacher.
That, that would stay?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And, and just, in that note, Mike, the last piece that we looked at, the top three languages in the world, one was Mandarin, two was English, and third was Spanish. So it makes some sense in that regard as well.
I should also know this, but don't, don't they, or do they, I should say, do they have any languages at SST? Any language courses available?
No, most of the sending schools take care of that requirement.
Because this would strike me as that, you know, if you had a, even when you're beginning, a sharing approach, I don't know if, if that, if that happens, where you might have different districts, like, like, say, Oyster River has Russian, you know, but they can only garner eight students, you know, would they take some of ours, and vice versa, things like that?
Lots of options for that with VHS and V-Lax.
Yeah, well, that's one of the ways we would satisfy, for instance, we do have students in Latin now, our own students, through VHS, which is a virtual high school, as well as V-Lax, and, and that could be an option for-
Can you explain, just for public consumption, how that, kind of, broad brush, how that works?
I can. A student, I'll use V-Lax as the example, they, they, they would meet a teacher, it's called Virtual Learning Academy, they meet a teacher online, it's very little interaction, human interaction, so it's really a self-directed process. You're going to be pretty responsible to deadlines and, and meeting those. You have an initial meeting with your teacher via phone, or I think some teachers even Skype, and then after that, you're, with your parent, and then after that, it's kind of, you, you hit these deadlines. And they're based on competencies, you achieve the competencies, which again, is a feather in the cap of where we're headed. And again, you can sort of chase down the thing which most interests you. At our building, we only allow students to take V-Lax classes if we don't offer them. So again, a Latin, German, Japanese would be things that if a student was really interested and self-directed, and, and went through the proper channels, they could do that.
And we get 28 seats, because we have a teacher, correct?
That's VHS.
That's VHS.
So we have, in fact, AP Physics, I think would be another one, that we do. That would be a, a long explanation, which I would want to be more prepared for to do it justice.
Do we have any students taking Mandarin?
Taking what?
Mandarin.
Right now, no. And again, I think, I think the, we have French, within the building, French and Spanish, and I know for a fact, there's a few in Latin, and some might be taking AP French, which is not something we offer right now.
Okay. Here's, I would ask this, you've got a program of studies coming, you have registrations that you need to ramp up for. The change you'd like to make, to be clear, for 16, 17, would be to try to engage an educator, or, or manage it somehow, to deliver on the needs of the existing French track students, so that they could continue through high school, but to engage an educator to begin Mandarin at the middle school, and start offering, and you'd like to do that next year, 16, 17?
That would be the hope.
And, and timely, time-wise, tonight would be a great time to act on that, but the eighteenth would suffice if need be, but beyond that, you really are going to be launching into registration, and you-
We would, even at this point, it's going to require an addendum to the already established program of studies.
Where's the board? How do you feel? Would you like to take action tonight? Do you have other questions? Do you want to bring them back for another cycle, or do, what do you want to?
I actually heard about the survey, I, I've actually talked about it, so I'm all set, if everybody else is.
I'm ready.
Then, the proposal is before us, I've heard enough, would someone like to make a motion to accept the proposal and launch an initiative with Mandarin Chinese?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
It's just, it'll be, we'll see what response we get, see how it goes, and if it doesn't work, then you, we look for something else.
We'll be thoughtful.
This would be one of those educational topics that would be cool, to have folks come back and-
Yes.
Continue to remind us that there's something else happening in the building, other than the building?
It's fun to work on, too.
It's good. It's great.
It's great, it's weird.
It's awesome.
Thank you, Chris.
A motion from Ms. McKinney, a second from Ms. Shelton, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Then we are unanimous. Chris, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you, Chris.
I'd ask the superintendent to update us on the junior, senior high school gymnasium floor, on that work.
Be happy to do that. Last week, concluding somewhere around the end of the weekend, the original floor was removed, off the, off the tire area, I mean, off the concrete. The comment, the feedback we got on what they found was that the concrete appeared drier than, than they had anticipated, which is good news, because they will not install the new floor until that concrete reaches, reaches a certain moisture, moisture level. And that will be tested officially to, to be assured of that. The new floor has been ordered. We expect to get a date on when we can expect receipt. In the meantime, I believe the floor will go through some fine tuning for the concrete, which it would include removing some nails that were in the track system into the concrete, there was some heads remaining, and filling some of the holes to seal that floor from moisture and other content. The, the new floor will be installed slightly different than the current floor. The big plus with the new floor design is that it's supposed to be more resilient, and the will, meaning that it'll deflect a little bit for kids when they, when they jump, and that sort of thing. And, and also, the floor will not have the insulation pad, it'll be more, it'll be easier to vent, and there will be some places to vent. So is, so the, the process, as it goes on, is that we will, we will take delivery of wood, we will start installing the wood on the, on the floor, once that is released from moisture, we will start at the far side, closest to the parking lot, floor that all the way to the bleachers. The bleachers will be rolled onto the new floor. The remaining old floor will be removed, and, and replaced with the new flooring. I believe it'll be urethane'd at that point in time, bleachers will return to their current location, be mounted to the floor. And the new floor will be a quarter of an inch taller, which will not affect doors, all doors swing to the outside, and the baskets will be adjusted by the, by the contractor. And we're hopeful that we will have that ready April. As a matter of fact, we're, we have a couple of programs that Chris Andruski would like us to have in the gym. And we will get a graphic on the floor, similar to the one that was there, and I believe the original graphic was removed judiciously, and we may see it reappear somehow, some way, as, as a kind of an artifact, I guess. Is that fair, Mr. Mazzoni? No comment? Okay, I guess that, time will tell.
Don't ruin any surprises.
Okay.
I, I had a conversation, I, I called Property Liability Trust, Iron Shore, in Concord, and had a conversation with the claims representative, just to review the incident and the, and the, the work that's been done. And I just want to share with the board that he was very complimentary of, of the district, of the staff at the building, all the work that they've done, the, the speed and efficiency with which the SAU made information available, and the building made space available, the, the steps taken to remediate as quickly as possible, et cetera. Just really pleased, he knocked on wood, I heard him pounding on his desk on the other end of the phone, saying that this has been as smooth a process as they've experienced, and hopefully, it'll continue. And so, the decision made about the flooring, the replacement, the installation, the implementation, I reviewed with him, all the players involved, who the contractors are, all superlative firms, very reputable, ought to do a great job, and he was, again, very complimentary of the district, so I think, I think we're in good shape.
Are we cleared yet on what, what causation was? I mean, we know-
No.
We know what the source was, I'm just thinking, you don't, you don't want it to recur.
He, he, he made comments about that today, and said, they're still, it's not clear, and he didn't want to speculate, but they're certainly, of course, his phrase was subrogation. He certainly is, they're, they're looking to identify what the, what the cause was, if there's negligence, you know, on the part of any manufacturer, installer, et cetera, so that they can chase that down. So is that consistent with what you've heard right along?
Yes.
So we'll, at some point, we'll be told, but right now, he didn't have anything that he was concrete about.
And, and we, we agree with our, we're, we're concerned about it not recurring as well, we'll, we'll follow that piece.
He also said, "It's a wonderful thing that we have sprinkler systems all across the state in these buildings. We've worked so hard over so many years to get them installed, to provide safety to the properties." He said, in all of the years he's been doing this, he has yet, he has yet to, to have a loss related to fire, but he has had multiple losses related to sprinkler systems failing and dumping water, so, but that's, you know, the risk when you, you know, you put a system in place that's full of, full of wet stuff like that. Anything else about the gym floor? Thank you very much, then.
Okay.
On our continuing items, I know that there are some, some brief thoughts to be shared in the area of Facilities and Communications. I'd ask Mike to offer anything about facilities, although really, the EdSpec continues to be the project at hand, right?
Yeah, the EdSpec is still under review. In fact, we just got back last week, a sort of a revised draft of the junior, senior high EdSpecs from, from the Bandwell team, and we're working on the narrative on that as we speak. I had several, and just in case people didn't hear it last time, that plan here is to have a joint meeting of the, of the school board and the facilities committee, once these drafts are done, hopefully in the not-too-distant future, to have Ingrid and her team in, hopefully Dr. Joyce can join us as well, and maybe even somebody from the Department of Education to speak to the, to the DOE standards, and what they mean to the whole process. So we can gather once, go through this, after we've all had chances to, you know, review them for a while, and then make changes and finalize them, so we can move forward. So that's the plan there. That meeting has not been scheduled, but we'll, we'll announce it in advance, and it'll be televised and all of that, and people can, you know, people can come to the meeting, and, so stay tuned for the scheduling of that one. I met, I had several meetings yesterday, and I'll just go through them. We're doing some subsidiary projects to these EdSpecs, as, as we're, you know, getting, getting the drafts done. drafts done. One of the issues that it occurred to me was the issue of, or hot-button issue, was the issue of athletic fields, and just anecdotally, I've heard, as a towns person, you know, different takes on that, you know, I've heard from some that we have plenty of fields, and from others, we don't have near enough. Those are definitely programming issues, but there are also crossover issues with the town. We, we have a lot of joint use of the fields, and so what we did yesterday, Chris Andruski, Jamie Hayes, John Pahopek, and Jim Hilton and I met and sort of had an initial discussion. Jamie had put together a calendar, or a schedule, of, of use of the fields on the junior and senior high school level, so we can see how much volume of usage there is and when, and Jim Hilton's working on the same from the town perspective, so we can, you know, just, we can see what the uses of, of these fields are, and, and have better data and a, and a better source to make decisions going forward, from, from the schools and the towns' point of view. That was one meeting, right after that, we didn't leave the room, the people changed. Chris stayed, Alina Lyon joined us, she's on the facilities committee, and we started to talk about, what do you call it? You can call it an auditorium or a gathering space, auditorium seems to be a hot-button word, but we talked about gathering spaces, and, because, because, you know, we foresee that as another big issue of facilities, and, and, and that again, that again starts, that's, that's a crossover issue with the town and the school, because it has, it has potentially multiple, multiple uses, as we learned the other day, you know, we had that deliberative session, it was fairly well-packed in there, but there weren't any super controversial issues, if there had been, there would have been a lot of people standing, so, and, and it's tough to park there, and those events, you know, you know, when you fill that room, so, so we, so we have, we have that in mind, so we're, first of all, making sure we understand what the programming needs are, both at the elementary school and at the high school. If, if, if we have a, a gathering space, it may make sense to, given the parking situation at the high school, to have those, the elementary school performances up there, maybe at a little nicer facility where, you know, people can enjoy the performances a little better. So we talked about that, no decisions are being made, again, this is just information gathering, obviously, at this stage, and so that's, that's what we're doing, so we're looking at it both from a programming point of view, from a community point of view, what are, what are uses, what Chris Andruski has done, is he's identified, I think it's forty or so, schools sort of in our size range, and we're, we came up with some questions to do a survey, to see what those schools have, how they use it, and just, just the more information on these types of things, the better. Skip Manso, who's on this, this project as well, has a brother who was in administration down in Massachusetts for many years, he's now with the Department of Education, and is going to provide us with some information on a, it's essentially a gymnasium, gymnasium slash auditorium, that they ultimately decided upon in that town down in, I think it was Byfield, Mass., which is an interesting concept, I mean, are, you know, perhaps more of a utilitarian type of thing, has more use, general, again, just, we want to cover the water, making sure we're, we're looking at things, and, and to give people information and give people choices. One more meeting yesterday, with, after that, I came over here and met with Russ Simon and Steve Fornia, we talked about the crossover issues, or I talked about them just now. It's important, I think, and I'd like the board's feedback on this, to, it seems self-evident that we need to get, you know, the, the town involved as well, at least have an open dialogue, because there are, there are crossover issues, and, you know, we're a, we're a one, one-town district, and there may be, there, we already have worked on some things together, we cleaned up the Carpenter property together, so there's, there's, there's certain sharing and efficiency potential opportunities, not just in facilities, but more broadly, perhaps, operationally. But I think we ought to start, that's all this was, it was just to sit down, it's to sort of, to begin a dialogue, it may be that at some point, we, we will want to have Steve join us on the facilities committee, so he can be abreast of what's going on, and, you know, let us know what's going on, on his end of things, since it's not always easy to keep up with everything. But those, those are the, that's the update.
I'd like to, to comment on the last, I think I've had an opportunity to talk with several board, town council members about shared services and so forth, and there has always been an interest in doing so, particularly on the town side, and I, I talked with three of them, as a matter of fact, this week, specifically about this facilities thing, and how we might move ahead, and I think it's time to take it out of its informality and put it into formality somehow, I think, the interest is there, we just don't have the vehicle for doing it. The, so I propose as a, as a next step, somehow, we, 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 we provide that vehicle and get the town to agree with it. I know one thing we had talked about was doing at our first meeting, our first joint meeting, which I think we're going to hold in February.
We had talked about March thirty-first, thirty-third, but I will tell you that the administrator and the chair of the council approached me at deliberative session on Saturday with a calendar, and really wanted to do it yesterday.
Okay.
So, you know, we need to talk again about, can we change schedules around to just get that meeting out of the way, because it seems more important that we start the conversation immediately, and then we'll see where it goes after that. I, I told them that we talked about the thirty-first, but...
And I think that makes good sense, because the appropriate board members will be there, they're going to be carrying on, but I hate to wait until then to, to put something on track to get this facilitated. I gotta be honest with you, I don't have the answer for it. I'd be glad to help in any way I can to, to get this discussion moving ahead, but quite honestly, at this point, other than talking to the town councillors, there isn't a, there isn't a plan to move it ahead.
So, has the conversation changed? I mean, we, we had this conversation once before, and it, yeah, maybe I, I don't want to, I don't want to be too, I don't want to be glib, but the perspective was, the town, the council certainly is not looking to add FTEs, they're not looking to pick up staff, there wasn't a perception that it was, that it was a priority, against all of the other priorities that the town has, to secure someone to provide facilities. It would certainly be nice if the school had someone to borrow that resource a bit, but that there wasn't an appropriation for that, nor an expectation that appropriation would be made. We put fifty thousand dollars in the budget so we could start moving forward, because we figured we needed at least a, a part-time, half-time, whatever it is we might afford, position. Has the conversation changed, that the council maybe has found dollars, found priority, and, and believes that there's a greater need there?
I can't answer that, I can, I can tell you...
We can ask those questions, I guess.
Well, and I think that's the question we need to, we need to ask. I've, you know, I've talked to, as I said, I talked this week to three of the, of the town council members who want to get moving on this. We haven't talked about funding, we haven't talked about, but...
This particular, the facilities director, the project management, the...
The whole, the whole concept, but facilities, for whatever reason, because it's, it's coming up quickly on our calendar.
Right.
There seems to be, there seems to be interest in moving ahead on that, Mike and I had a meeting with...
Mike Hoffman.
Mike Hoffman, who has a whole list of reasons why he thinks we shouldn't delay, because we're, we the town, because we're losing efficiencies by putting this off, so, and to answer your question, I, I wouldn't say that there's money allocated, but I think we need to move it off the spot, and start talking real, real, real moves here, real commitments on, on the part of the, on town, and I, I think, I think they're ready to have that discussion.
Just to reiterate, the purpose of the meeting, I know we've talked about the facilities issue, but the purpose of that meeting yesterday wasn't just, just about the, you know, shared facilities director, and we, I don't think we really talked about that much at all, I think it was mentioned, but is the notion that, and, and this is my first foray into politics, and I'm almost a year to the day into it here now, right? And so, but anecdotally, and just from living here, you know, I've understood that, you know, towns and, and school districts don't always, well, rarely work together, that, that there may be more fiefdoms, and I just don't get it. I understand there may be some legal challenges, in terms of separation and all that, but, especially in a town like Newmarket, especially, you know, with limited resources, ever, ever more limited resources, and lack of state aid and all that, I just think that, you know, if we're not talking, and, and, at the very least communicating and knowing what, what, what each of us are doing, then I, I think we're missing an opportunity there, and I, you know, we talked at the end, and, you know, just sort of, we're brainstorming, but, you know, this notion of a, of an occasional joint meeting with the boards, maybe, I don't know how much one could hope to accomplish with that, I think we should do it, but I, I don't know how effective that is in actually getting things done, you know, a once-a-year, a once-a-year meeting isn't going to accomplish much, you know, I don't know if we even have really thought much about an agenda, and I don't like to, and I don't know if anybody really likes to meet just to meet, you got to meet with a purpose. So one thing we talked about was, in, in, you know, you know, I'll, I'll use the word committee, but like a standing, like I, it might meet quarterly, not a big committee, but maybe, maybe the superintendent...
Two and two with, two and two with the two administrators.
Precisely.
Yep.
So have the superintendent and have, have the town administrator, and then a member from each of the boards, you know, meet quarterly, just to sort of discuss and, and, and keep a dialogue going, because I don't know otherwise how you'd, how you'd maintain communication.
No, I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
And I, I like your idea of the agenda, because I'm, I'm looking at the calendar, and I'm trying to think when we could do this, when can we talk about the agenda, what, that's why I think we ended up on the thirty-first, because we just don't have time between now and then.
Hey, you know, I said it when we, when we met last, in defense of the, of the administrator and the chair, they asked about this in November.
Yeah.
Right? And we kind of kicked it, you know, we were in the middle of, and our, and our lives are different, you know what I mean, our cycles, for us, we were in the middle of superintendent search, we had, and so it may have been a quiet, might have been a downtime, it might have been an appropriate time for the council, but for us, we said, you know, we really got to get through this superintendent search and this annual meeting, so...
You know, and I, I like the notion of, the more brain power you can have, the, the better, I mean, because they, you know, sometimes groups can get tunnel vision, and they're not realizing what necessarily is important, or what the issues are, and I, I think it'd be good to, you know, have that interaction and continual communication.
So, sounds to me like, to the agenda that, we talked, we talked last time, I've got notes for, you know, a proposed agenda to propose to the chair, the council, that we said we wanted to talk about what's this meeting for, how will it be used, how often will it meet, you know, will it be, will it be a council meeting that the board attends, a board meeting that the council attends, or a joint meeting on an alternative opportunity, an alternative night, when the, when the council and the board will meet together, you know, how should an agenda be assigned or, or addressed? All of those mechanics being essentially the agenda for the first meeting, so that we could lay some groundwork, maybe, I'll add to that, you know, the establishment of a joint committee that could, could represent, could represent that larger body in an ongoing manner, and then report back and try to work towards making action happen, calling on the council and the board to meet again in full membership, when there were action items that the public should hear us talk more broadly about, or when we wanted to take action in a joint manner.
And I, I think, I think we'll be well-served with our, with Meredith coming in as well, because she experiences some of this cooperation up in Cape Elizabeth.
Now, yeah.
So, she, she'll be a good resource, I think, as well.
Do you want to change the thing?
So, yeah, so the question was asked, we had talked about it, and we were pushing it out after the, after the election, you know, we, we knew that we had to have the election, and then we were going to reorganize, and then we were going to see if we couldn't do it, March having, March having five weeks, five Thursdays, we kind of looked at the thirtieth and thirty-first and said that might be an opportunity. If we threw that out, I mean, they were looking to get it done before the end of February, and I don't, and...
I think...
Why do they give us the...
Because they'll have a new board.
Yeah.
And that makes sense.
Our, our membership isn't likely to change, there's, there's no contested race.
But then, but then, but they'll have a new board.
Yeah, so should we wait till after they have a new board?
No, no, well, that's, yes, and that's why it was put out. My, here's my suggestion, and I'm, I'm composing this as I talk, so, I think we ought to send a couple scouts out from both the town council and the school board to work on this issue, and come back with some recommendations.
What, you mean the meeting issue or the facility issue?
Either, both. I think there's some interest, I have some interest, I'd be willing to devote some time to it. I know the, I know several people in the town council have some interest in doing it, and perhaps we could do what we've been doing in the past, and that is getting some thoughts put together, so that when we, I, I agree with Mike, I don't want to go to a meeting where we talk about what the meeting's going to be about. I think we ought to, we ought to, we ought to be able to do better than that. So I'm wondering if you could, Nate, reach out to the town council and see if they would be willing to identify two people to work on this, I hate that word, too.
How about one, from each?
One or two, I don't care.
Or, I mean, do you, do you have this meeting, and we discuss that? Like, that's a great agenda, are you guys interested, is there something we can do? And then there's that full discussion at that meeting.
I think that's okay, but I, I think we've got enough confirmation that they are interested, and it's just a matter of doing some homework. I'm just hesitant to wait too long, that's all. I don't hear a resounding...
Oh, no, no, I mean, no, I think, so instead of, instead of the council and the board coming together for their first session as directed by the charter, to talk about what that reality should be moving forward, have a subgroup, a sub, a task force, whatever, sit and make recommendations, put that note, those notes together, so that when the council and the board meet, they would simply discuss those recommendations and take action.
And, and to answer your question, to answer Elizabeth's questions, we could get some feel for some facts relative, is it real interest, is it the kind of thing that they, that they would consider supporting financially? Get some of that stuff done ahead of time.
Oh, with respect to facilities?
Sure.
Okay. I mean, we had, I, I'm only going back, we had that meeting, sat right here and, you know, and talked about money that was or wasn't, and, you know, the, the, the lack of likelihood that they would add any positions on the town side, because it, you know what I mean, we had, but if that's, if we think things have changed, maybe now with the facilities conversation ongoing, maybe there's a different, a different tenor, a different perspective, yeah, then we can, so I will, I can reach out to council, and we can...
And let me just be the stirrer a little bit, isn't that something that should happen in public, though? Shouldn't that be something that the public can watch the meeting?
Sure.
You know, that's, that's my concern.
Just like, just like the facilities meeting, the, and it begs back a little bit to the efficiency committees, committing, meetings we had years ago, which was, it was exactly what you talked about, it was the superintendent, chair of the school board, chair of, of the town council, the business manager from each, and I think then there were four people that participated in the discussions, and yeah, it was, it was a working, it was a well-working group.
So, I'll reach out and say, maybe we can, maybe we can agree to informally at this point, just put together a working group that could bring something, and maybe that makes a meeting of the two groups at the end of March make more sense, because that would give now, with a vacation week in between, it would give basically three or four weeks of action time for that subgroup to meet and come up with the agenda for that joint meeting, and to come up with recommendations about, you know, the rules of engagement, if you want, you know, like, what are we going to do when we have these meetings moving forward, and recommendations about the facilities position, and about a working subgroup that might meet more regularly than the council and chamber, the council and board would meet. And I know I've got at least one volunteer, so, okay. I'll do that tomorrow. How about, anything else? I'll reach out to Phil and just say, you know, we had this conversation, and here's, we'd love to continue to plan on the end of March, but in the interim, what we'd like to do is actually make it so that when we get to the end of March, it's a really productive session, because we've already done all this legwork, and we have all of this stuff to lay on the table for the two bodies to look at.
By the way, Phil was on the efficiency committee.
Back then he was, yeah, I remember that.
So, I mean, the concept is, shouldn't be a striking one, right?
Anything else about facilities? Thank you. Communications?
I have one thing. This is a list of folks that might...
This is a list of folks that Mike and I met with, what, nine months ago, I guess now? And this was a list of, of what we tend to categorize as diverse participants that Mike and I picked. We had these four meetings that you see here. Some of the people on the list did not attend for whatever reason. My recommendation is that we perhaps use this list as a basis for further discussion, but that we schedule during the month of March, two or three, let's call them small group sessions, where these folks are invited in to talk about their, to give us their comments on our progress, to give, to give us comments on, and suggestions, and to ultimately serve as our ambassadors to go out into the, to the public and with some information that they might not have now about things like facilities.
One of the things, and I'll take, sort of take you to the next level, one of the things we talked about is taking beyond this small group of people that we have right here to get a broader response and engagement of the community as a whole. And I think one of the things that I've been working on this past week is sort of the newsletter piece, and I think Mike and I were talking a little bit before, you know, maybe as we get moving with the newsletter, and I'll talk fundamentally about how, how I envision that at this point, you guys can let me know what you think. You know, having a signup genius with a specific time, so that people can sign up for times when they're available, two or, two or so of us are at each meeting, we know when they are, and we have that going forward, so that we have as many people knowing as much as we can. So, in terms of the newsletter, a lot sort of has gone on this week. I met with Chris and Jason at the junior senior high on Monday, and we talked about what it would take from a technology standpoint to rebuild the MailChimp system that we had before, what needed to happen, how could we reuse it? And, you know, I talked about some, some out, my, our goal really is to get, again, the message out to as many people as possible. And so, to that end, I was in touch with the rec center, I went to the rec center on Monday after my meeting with Chris and Chris, and spoke with Amy there, and she told me that she would allow us to, she would disseminate our sales, MailChimp sign-in. Let me start off with that. We can use the MailChimp that Jim Hayes used before. We have 1,100 subscribers presently with that. We could have up to 900 more for free, if for some stroke of luck, by people finding out about it. We go over that. We would need to talk about a monthly payment going forward, but we'll deal with that problem if it arises. What has happened is that, as I said, I sent an email to Steve Foiner to ask her, ask him if we could put a blurb in his newsletter with a link for the MailChimp. He said yes. I submitted that to him today. So that will be in there, so people can sign up that way. The rec center communications director, Amy, has told me that she will reach out to her rec connect group, which is community leaders, the Sunrise Sunset Center, the people that go to the rec center, to provide them with that information, to allow them to sign up and, and get onto the MailChimp. And sort of how I'm envisioning utilizing that, I thought it would be confusing if we, the first thing that we talked about was getting information about the Warren articles out. When I was going through everything, my thought was if we put anything out before next Tuesday, people might be confused that that's being voted on then, and I want to avoid that at all costs. And we want to make sure we do it the right way. So, after that time, we will put out the first MailChimp, which is going to be a video of Nate and Mike, that Chris from Channel 13 is going to help us do, to talk about the Warren articles, give the visuals that were shown at the deliberative session, and to talk about the details there, so people understand what the Warren articles are about. That's going to run on Channel 13, just as a filler thing until the election time. And, let me think what else there is.
So just the MailChimp is just a tool that allows us to get people's emails and send out a newsletter?
Yes.
To everybody who, who registers?
I first thought maybe we should try to clean up the, the original 1,100 list, but that's a labor that I don't think we need to make. People can choose to uninscribe if they want to. We're going to send it to that 1,100 plus anymore that come in in that time. So that would happen by this time next week, ideally, if we can get the, the video done of you guys before that.
Can we send home a notice at school?
Yes, we're going to use the, the, Jason's going to use technology stuff that way to get that information. It'll go out to the schools, it'll go out to the rec center people, the Sunrise Sunset, the town.
That's great.
And anywhere else that you guys think of that can go. I'm going to go to the Wadley Falls Place Two to meet with the people there. Maybe it'll be a posting situation, but I'm sure there's email access there too, and we can get them on the list as well. So, you know, it's basically, we have the system in place, just reigniting it. The goal is going to be to get it out next week, and then another one in, at the end of February, and then starting two times a month going forward. I've been in touch with Meredith to let her know what we're planning, to make sure we're in line with what she wants us to be doing. Obviously, she, you know, has an excellent newsletter in Cape Elizabeth and will be able to help us immensely, but I want to make sure that we're doing what she wants. And sort of going forward, having a facilities update on a consistent basis, really staff spotlight, student spotlight. We had an excellent thing going on tonight with a student who received an award. That's something that needs to be disseminated throughout the town, so people can congratulate this young woman for the award. You know, events, all sorts of things, so that people know what's going on in schools.
Top 10 graduating class, all that stuff.
All that stuff.
That we don't get to talk about.
We, we have a lot of very positive things that happen that people just don't know about, and this is just one way to start getting this information out.
You know, we do this often. We, sitting back now, we do this often, this brainstorming. And one of the things that we might do is hold a, you know, create a bucket, create a, it used to be we'd do a wiki, or it's something, you know, where you'd, everybody would dump it. We might want to dump a parking lot or a bucket somewhere, you know, where we could put these things, because the top 10, that one jumps to mind, but the SST certificate ceremony that they do at the end of every year when the kids, that's something that, and once you build these, then somebody who's managing this can look back every year and say, wow, have I missed anything? Have I done all these? Have I caught all these? Because if you don't go looking for some of this stuff, it sneaks by you, no matter who you are, so.
What's neat about this newsletter, too, is that it'll have, it'll have links to it, you know, so like if we're talking about, say, Dr. Joyce's report.
We can get right there.
Somebody can just go to it.
Amen. That's great.
This is, this is.
So, you know, and I, I want to say also, I've had input from community members who have offered to spend time with me, so I'm going to be meeting on Monday with one special person that way. And I am grateful for any input that anyone can give, anyone wants to email me with thoughts.
That's great.
That's great.
We're good. So, thank you guys.
It's, it's coming together, by the way, in the right timeline.
Yes.
So that, as we think about really looking for a community to help make some decisions and take some actions in the next 365 days, call it, this is meaningful, very meaningful.
Well, one of the things that came up at the deliberate, deliberative session was that, about the chili cook-off, and how it might have been better if we had been able to disseminate that information in a wider net to the elderly or the older citizens, because it was a $5 night out, where you can see kids being excited and have a fun night. But no, people didn't know that it was going on. So it's like, things like that, I think, you know, creates the buy-in. We get to, what sort of meeting space do we need? What does it look like? Those types of things.
Proactively, let me, I want to say this too, because I just, we've got some really important things that go on, some really great things that benefit our community, even though 75% of our community may never know it. And I don't know if I made this comment recently, but, but where I work, we're doing this facilities thing and pushing a project. And I've been shocked to hear people say how few of them even knew that it was being discussed. It's been the only thing we've talked about for weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks, and meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting. Some huge number of 10, you know, thousands of people don't even have a clue we're having the conversation. One of the things, separate from a facilities conversation, but certainly connected to everything we've just been talking about, one of the things that might be of use is to contemplate an annual distribution, an annual mailing. Can't be something like our annual report, but it could be something that, that goes out as a flyer or a brief newsletter to every mail drop that says, these are the things that have happened this year, or these are the things that we expect will happen this year, or these, do you know what I mean? And I don't mean that you do this, but I got a quote today for, you know, for almost 10,000 mail drops in a community, a full color, I mean, I'm afraid it'll look too expensive, right? As cheap as it is relatively, but full color, tri-fold, blah, 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 all posted and mailed and dropped, a couple of grand. That's a larger community. Fewer mail drops here probably than that. Not a lot fewer, but some fewer. Something that we could think about, that on an annual basis, we ought to communicate to our public, not persuasively, or to engender support for votes or what have you, but as an informative, these are the things that have happened. You should know that one of our students did this, and our class traveled here, and somebody would have to put that together and prioritize what could fit on a small piece of paper and go, but, but there are too many people that have the potential to come and go from the community, invest their lives in it day by day, day by day, and not have any idea that any of these good things are happening. And that's important, because it's their tax dollars at work, it benefits their property values, you know, I mean, all of those things. So, something for us to think about moving forward.
So, you know, there's, there's two aspects. And I'm not certainly pretending to be the expert in communication, but it's getting the word out, right? And, but also getting the word in. And I think that what Al talked about was, was sort of getting the word in. How do we get the feedback? And, and I think, I think there will be, as part of the BANWEL teams process, there'll be public charrettes to consider facilities issues. Those will be their own thing. But I, I think it's valuable, you know, what Al and I did initial, initially, to have people have the ability to come in small groups with a couple board members present and, and be able to talk, you know, off camera about what they're, what they're thinking. Because some of the, some people may not be willing or want to talk on camera. These have been hot button issues for the town. We have to acknowledge that. But they may have some good thoughts, and, and we ought to know them. We ought to know their thoughts. And, and maybe, you know, in a divide and conquer approach, there, you know, we can set up a regular system. Because this is going to, right now, we're sort of in the, I guess, the, we're in the fact-finding, the education phase of this process. There's going to be a time where we get into the choice phase, once we've got the information out. There will be choices to be made. And, and we'll, we'll need people, to give people an opportunity to give their feedback in a, in a, in a comfortable setting then. And then, you know, come fall and up until a vote in next March, there's going to be sort of a, another informational phase. Because you, I think you need to provide people as many opportunities. So I think we ought to, and I can put something together, maybe a proposal for next weekend, next, next meeting about setting something up on a regular basis using signup genius, again, which is something online where, you know, people can sign up, we don't have to, you know, it was, it was, it was, Al and I had a, we, we got them here, but it was, you know, it's a lot of back and forth and emailing, and it's, it's kind of difficult.
But don't, I think one of the things we have to keep, keep in mind, for instance, that the notion that we invite people is going to be great. We put it on the townhouse wall out here. It ends up in the newspaper in an article that only people who subscribe actually will read. And we're going to see a charrette, and it's going to be great, but it's going to be a subset of the same 200 people that come for everything that we do. And there's still 8,000 more people out there or more, you know, and that's the piece of.
Exactly. That's.
Let's make sure we continue to keep pushing that outreach, because we want the information coming in, but it would be nice if we could get some information, hey, we don't, we're never going to stop wanting to hear from the couple hundred people that are actively involved and engaged. We count on them for their opinions, for their dissemination of information, how they represent their constituents or the people that live near them and are like them or what have you. But it's also going to be important that we try to engage three or four grand of those, three or four thousand of those other people that we don't ever hear from.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Didn't we talk about, like, 6:30 on a meeting night? So, like, once a month, two of us get here at 6:30, if anybody wants to come in, 6:00, 6:30, and they can be here early. They don't have to stay with the whole meeting, but they could come and just ask questions.
That might be efficient.
That might be efficient. I don't, I don't know.
Ice cream cards walking through the entrance. Where we got to go. I think my suggestion is for the time being, and I think absolutely Kim has got the tiger by the tail in terms of bigger issue, and that is all this external communication that's got to exist. I also think that there should be some kind of regularity to meeting with the public. However, we have that regularity, which is public comment, and we get very little of it. I think part of it's for the reason that Elizabeth mentioned earlier, and that's some people don't want to stand up in front of the, stand up in front of the microphone. What I, with your permission, what I'd like to recommend is that we pick three days in the month of March at 8 o'clock, where we invite these people.
Eight at night?
In the morning. When we did it last time, it seemed to work pretty well, for an hour. And it's an hour long, limited. And get some of this, get some of this feedback that's available out there right now. And I also think it's a great idea to have board members pair up for each of those, for each of those three meetings.
I think, I think that's, that's, that's a, that's a good idea, too. And, you know, I'm actually, I would, if, if I were to attend, I'd probably have to do it earlier.
Whatever.
Realistically.
I just want to get the ball rolling.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I think that's a good idea. My, my only concern was, is that, you know, that I don't want to, I don't want to have, have the idea out there that was sort of handpicking, you know, and sort of, you know what I'm saying? I mean, and, but I also understand you have to start somewhere. And, and certainly, the, the list that we have is a good one in terms of diversity and of, in the community, I think. But I, I just, I think if we're going to do that, we ought to plan on allowing others to have, have that opportunity, too.
Absolutely.
So, maybe.
So then let's think this, so we could do one, say we had somebody come, 6 o'clock March 17th. We could do a 6 o'clock one, we're, somebody, two members are here for that. You did maybe one at 8:00 AM, because I know parents can't be here at 8:00 AM.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Sure.
So we move the time around.
Sure, sure. That's a great idea.
Don't always do 8:00 AM, do other times.
Yep, that's a great idea.
Do a 5:30 breakfast, you know, sunrise session, sunrise worship session if you want.
And limit it to what, I don't know, eight people or so? Because you get too many and people can't get their thoughts across, then, or, or, yeah.
And we did, by the way, I admit, it's, we chose, which I hate, the participants. But they did, we did tell them that we would come back to them and do some follow-up. And I think, at least from, from Mike and my standpoint, we told them we were going to periodically have them come back.
So let's give them those three options.
So let me go back. Are we, are we reaching out to a, to a certain group and inviting them, or are we, we're reading off to this group again?
I would reach out to this group of those that attended.
Those that attended and say, we'd like to have you dial back.
Right.
Give us feedback on where we've come from the last time we spoke.
And if there is a friend of yours that is interested. These were, these are people, by the way, they weren't, they weren't pulled out of the, out of the sky. These are all people who've been active.
Right. Verbal, vocal.
They've been, they've been.
Well, so.
So at the risk of being exclusive, I would take this list and I would say to the people that came last time, we're going to have three more meetings. You're welcome to bring a person with you. We don't, we don't want to bring in 10. And let's just wing it and see how it goes.
So, I, I heard Elizabeth, and I might counter with, on the 17th of March, we start at 5:30. That allows us to do an hour and still break, still break comfortably before the meeting, so 5:30 to 6:30. Look off to the following week, the 22nd or 23rd, and talk about an 8, 8 o'clock or so in the morning.
23rd.
23rd, 8:00 in the morning. I kind of, I skipped right past the first two weeks, only because we're leading up to the voting day on the 8th.
So maybe.
Now, we've done a Thursday, we've done a Wednesday. Do you want to go to the Tuesday, the 29th, and pick a different time of day, like a 9, 10, 10 o'clock, or a?
Sure.
Is that something we can?
29th at 10?
Is there a better time? Should it be closer to lunch? I'm trying to think about parents who couldn't make the 8 o'clock and didn't jump, well, we're not talking parents, we're talking about, some of these are parents, but.
Yep.
Yeah.
Are any of these folks going to be available at 10 o'clock?
Well, I guess we can throw that out there and see how many people.
I mean, you could, there's a couple of other dates. Like, like you said, you could do the 22nd as well. You could do, you know, you could do that anytime between 8:00 and 11:00, maybe. You could, depending on what your feedback is. And then on the 29th, we're talking about a mid-morning or a noon time.
So let's put the feelers out, see what we get for answers for 5:30, 6:30. So let's put the feelers out, see what we get for answers for 5:30, 6:30, see what we get for 8:00 AM, and then there's that extra time that we can say.
And the 29th, is that on there, too?
Yeah.
If, if you wanted to put 10:00 AM, and then just see if anybody can make it at that time, and if they can't, then let's move the number, what works for you, does eight?
Would you, would you folks be okay with me contacting these people?
Yes, please.
And letting them try to fit in?
Yep.
And say to them, in addition to yourself, you're, you're welcome to have one other individual attend, there'll be two board members at the meetings, and the purpose of the meetings is to get your feedback on, on board performance to date, and also give, be in a position for a very short period of time, to do some kind of preamble, as an opening to the meeting, a 10-minute preamble that says, this is where we are in facilities, this is where we are in the superintendent search, this is where we are in this, but no more, no more.
10 to 15 minutes preamble, and 45 minutes of discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else in the area of communication? I have flipped my pages so many times that now I don't have a front. Somewhere here's an agenda, right there. Moving right along then to policy. We have two policies in our packet from last time, they are, they are before us for a second reading to be revised. The first is policy BEA, regular board meetings. Remind those listening, and those with us, that the adjustments were simply to clarify that the, that the board, the board at its regular board meetings would have public comment, and that would by policy be restricted to residents of Newmarket, and any, any alteration or any adjustment to that would be by exception, motion of the board, or action of the board. So the changes are so noted there, I'd seek a motion to accept this revision on this second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion of BEA, regular board meetings? Hearing none, I have a motion from Ms. McKinney, a second from Mr. Kennison, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Then we're unanimous. Same changes being made to policy BEDH, public participation at board meetings. Any discussion there? Seek a motion to accept the second reading and revisions of policy BEDH.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Kennison, a second from Ms. McKinney, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Then we're unanimous. To my knowledge, there wasn't anything in the policy tonight concerning personnel matters, but I have two names that have been added to the agenda, I'd ask for your action on those separately. The first is Catherine Freeman, who's a school psychologist, hers is a request for maternity, which is, which is a guaranteed privilege under the collective bargaining agreement. I don't have, I guess we don't necessarily, don't need any details, so I seek a motion to accept the, seek a motion to accept the request for maternity leave by Catherine Freeman.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Zink, a second from Ms. McKinney, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're unanimous. The second is a maternity leave request from Kristen Lanigan, elementary teacher, I seek a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Zink, a second from Ms. Shelton, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're unanimous. There were three packets of minutes. The first is our meeting of the 21st of January, both our public and our non-public sessions that night. Seek a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
So moved.
And a second, give everybody a chance to skim those if you haven't already. Any discussion? I have a motion from Ms. McKinney, a second from Mr. Zink, on the motion of the minutes, public and non-public of January 21st, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're unanimous. There's a single page of minutes, please recall, we met a week later on January 28th, a discussion of transition matters with our new superintendent. I seek a motion to accept those minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. McKinney, a second from Ms. Shelton, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're unanimous. And finally, we have the minutes of the deliberative session, Saturday, January 30th. We are so blessed with outstanding support in the area of recording our business, that was a compliment to yours. She's so busy, see? Nicely done, all of this work, thank you very much.
Sorry, I was calling.
I need a motion to accept the minutes of the deliberative session, January 30th, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. McKinney, a second from Mr., I wrote that down wrong, Mr. Kennison, there you go. Any discussion? Hearing none. I did, in fact, look at that, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Then we're unanimous. The manifests are with us tonight, someone has it to move?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I move that we accept the total payroll manifest of $253,296.57, and a total accounts payable manifest of $463,937.61, for a total of all manifest of $717,000, no, $717,234.18.
I need a second?
Second.
A motion from Ms. Shelton, a second from Ms. McKinney, all those in favor of the manifest as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're unanimous. Anything else that should be before us tonight, before we adjourn to non-public? Just double-checking. Need a motion to go into non-public session tonight under 91A, colon, 3, paragraph 2, section A, the dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee, it's a personnel matter.
So moved.
I have that motion from Ms. McKinney. Mr. Zink, it's a roll-call vote, Mr. Zink?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Aye.
Mr. Kennison?
Aye.
Ms. McKinney?
Aye.
Chair is an aye.